Good evening, I'd like to call the September 9th, 2013 Burnsville Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Want to welcome everyone listening and viewing in. Welcome Commissioners, Staff.
Welcome.
The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any changes from Commissioners?
None for me, sir.
None? Any staff? All right, I would look for a motion then.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Julick, second by Commissioner Brederich. I would, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes 5-0. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from August 12th, 2013. Any changes from Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, there's a very minor correction need to be made. Under election of Chair, Vice Chair, and HOC representative, the first items, the ayes have Corey as voting in favor, and then it says Corey abstained, so we need to strike Corey there.
Yep, so noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other changes, Commissioners, Staff?
None from Staff.
All right, with the noted change, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes. Oh, sorry?
We didn't have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd look for a motion.
With the change, with the correction, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I beg to move the adoption of the minutes.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Singh, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Teary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes 5-0. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. FR/Cal Bluff LLC, application for conditional use permit for outdoor storage of construction materials and installation of a 10-foot fence at 11401 Rupp Drive. Mr. Slenia.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioners. Tonight is a public hearing, and it is for conditional use permit for outdoor storage. As indicated, the property owner, which is FR Cal Bluff, is in a lease agreement, or soon-to-be lease agreement, with John Deere Landscapes. They are pursuing a conditional use permit for outdoor storage and to allow a fence to exceed the eight-foot limitation. Anything over eight feet is allowed by conditional use in the I-1 district, and thus, that has been wrapped into the project as well. The outdoor storage would be in the northeast corner of the site. Let me jump to that. So here is the 11401 building. Here's an indication where the outdoor storage is. As I noted, I-1 allows outdoor storage as a conditional use, as does the increased fence Back in 2008, John Deere Landscapes came from the Planning Commission City Council requesting approval of an outdoor storage company, outdoor storage area, also on Rupp Drive, to the neighboring property to the north. And you can actually see the area, I believe those are vehicles, can actually see the area right here. This is the current home for John Deere Landscapes. That is the 11351 Rupp Drive site. John Deere, over time, has grown, the business has grown, they're looking for additional space, and they are pursuing a tenant space within this building, and thus, in correlation, would have to relocate the outdoor storage from the neighboring property to this location. Again, they are, they're growing internally. They're proposing to lease over 15,000 square feet from the proposed site. In 2008, their storage area was 3,000 square feet, their proposed storage area is 4,000 square feet. The applicant is proposing to preserve that valuable and sometimes expensive warehouse space for items that are susceptible to the weather. Because this is a landscape company, or landscape supplier, I should say, there's lots of PVC involved, lots of plastic, blankets and things like that, that are used to help prevent weed growth. Much of that can get wet, can be exposed to the elements, and thus, the applicant is proposing an area out here to preserve their interior warehouse space for other products. I also noted in the report, since the installation and usage of this area to the north, staff has received no complaints, no code violations, no contact from the neighbors concerned with the aesthetics of this area. It's our understanding, John Deere Landscapes is a good neighbor, and has been accommodating for not only the property owner, but the neighbors. Staff feels this is a very good site for them. I do have another image. So here is Rupp Drive, so here we're looking east, due east. Here's the building they're currently in, here's a portion of the building they're proposing. They will be backing up into this green area. There is some existing parking here, and this is, for all essentially, all essential purposes, underutilized hard surface. Sometimes employees park back here, but there is sufficient parking along the front of the building and in other areas. This is not a striped or designated parking area. Staff feels this is a good location for screening from the surrounding properties, as well as the neighbors to the south. These homes, by the time you calculate the distance, are over 200 feet from the proposed storage area. And again, we have heard no complaints of noise or issues from their existing space on Rupp Drive. Due to the ordinance requirements, it does say that storage needs to be screened from adjacent properties as well. The applicant is proposing a black vinyl coated chain link fence, which is, does a nice job of containing and securing the product, but it doesn't do much for screening, and thus, the applicant is proposing a secondary screen, a metal mesh, that would fall within that chain link to help screen, basically, from the loading docks of the neighboring City staff has seen that used, the Menards on 13, as well as the, this is a picture of the Walmart garden area, and you can see the fencing, and then the black mesh just helps to put some type of opacity between what's outside the storage area and what's inside the storage area. And again, because it is metal versus a fabric, it holds up a little bit better. With that, Commissioners, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit for storage and fencing. There are two conditions included in your packet. Staff will stand for any questions, and it is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Slenia. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Slenia? Mr. Julick?
Thank you, Chair. Chris, what will be done with the prior storage area and prior permit?
The, the storage area, the storage area will be dismantled. The applicant is actually proposing to use the same fencing, so it will be removed from site and relocated to the proposed site. The conditional use permit remains valid for six months, so if another company or tenant within that building wanted to utilize that outdoor storage, they would have to put up some type of fencing and screening, but it does remain valid for six months. After that, if nobody utilizes it, it becomes null and void.
Would it be an appropriate condition to, basically, just state that flat out, that the existing storage area or fencing or something must be, or can't you put that in? Because you've already provided that approval.
We, we've provided it in 2008, but it does stay in there, it does give them the six-month window. And then it, so the previous property owners on notice that if that's not utilized, it's null. We can certainly put it on the proposed application, but since we're not dealing with that previous property anymore, I, I don't have a way to connect them.
Right, I know you can't eliminate the prior approval, but you can eliminate the stuff that was there for the prior approval.
Correct.
So if we had an additional condition that said something to the effect that materials and fencing from the existing storage area shall be removed and may be used at applicant's discretion on the new site, that makes it clear, everybody's, at least the old stuff gets eliminated, and if that CUP expires, then, then, then everything's gone there. You don't have to worry about it, just staying there. Is that reasonable?
Absolutely. I think that's, that's reasonable, I, I think the applicant would be agreeable to it. Staff can add that, or finalize the language and provide it to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, this is a two-pronged application here. One is to store materials, and the second is for reconstruction of a 10-foot fence.
Correct.
Current code limits fence to be eight feet, so anything with a, with a conditional use permit, we can allow 10 feet.
Correct. Condition, excuse me, commercial and industrial districts are allowed eight feet. They can exceed eight feet by conditional use permit.
Now, the follow-up, the purpose of the fence that you're asking to put in, what's the purpose of that fence?
I would say for, for the applicant, the purpose is to secure the product that's in there. For the city, the purpose is to delineate what the storage area is, so we don't have product flowing all over the parking lot and...
Thanks for explaining that. My question now is, when, the condition is just to put in a 10-foot fence, okay? Are we going to put a timeline in it? Because if construction goes on, and there's material over the place there, I mean, would the fence be reconstructed before, or when everything is done? I'm, I'm looking for a timeline for the fence.
Certainly. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the applicant is looking to, to move that fence as soon as, as soon as there's an approval from the city. So the fence would be put up first, the, the materials would be stored inside for a short amount of time, and then, and then put in the, the fence put in.
Thanks for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Any other questions for Mr. Slenia? Commissioner Teary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, for this, for this fence here, does city require to see any plans or details? The reason I'm asking, in past, when we provided fence construction, want to make sure for durability and code, all the poles are three foot into, you know, with cement constructions and so forth. I'm just asking, are we going through any kind of a plan review approval on this?
The Planning Commission isn't reviewing it, but that's a great question, Commissioners. I believe the threshold is six feet. Any fencing over six feet needs to satisfy certain wind load requirements. Our building official knows the details on that, I don't, but he will be receiving a permit and a plan review for the fence, to make sure those are satisfied.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Teary. Any other questions? All right. This is a public hearing, and at this time, I'd like to, like to open the public hearing. Seeing no one, I will now close the public hearing and open it up for discussion at this Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I think this is a reasonable application. They have come before, the Planning Commission and the council before, they've been good stories, and I don't see any reason why we should not approve of this, so I'm going to, I'm going to, I think the Planning Commission should recommend this application, and I will vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Brederich?
I would also agree, I, I drove by the site, and actually, the new site is far more hidden than the site of the, of the current storage. And so it's, it's buried back there, there's a substantial hill behind it, so there's really nobody in the building or the neighbors that can get close to it, so... Chris, on the, on the opaque material, we're only, you can't really see it, so we require that just because there's a lot line to one direction?
That is correct.
To the, to the north, probably?
That is correct. On the, the visual that you're seeing, the, the green or the teal is actually a lot line.
Okay.
It, while you're out there, it appears it is, you know, it was developed jointly and so forth, but due to the property line, staff wanted to make sure there was proper screening to the neighbor.
They don't have that today, do they? Is the one that's there doesn't have the screen to the side?
No, they don't. That's a good point, Commissioners, actually, the ordinance changed slightly between 2008 and now.
So they're just really moving the cage itself, the poles, and then they're going to be adding the screening on the north side?
Correct.
No further questions?
All right, great. Anything else? Oh, Commissioner Julick?
Just one comment on the additional condition, wanted to get other Commissioners' input as to whether they think that's an appropriate additional condition.
Commissioners, anybody?
I was, I mean, I think Chris did say that the, the, kind of the rules we have in place would have the other one kind of sunset naturally within six months?
That is the wa, excuse me, that's the way the ordinance reads, is if it's not utilized, but being that the, the applicant's utilizing the same materials, I don't think there's anything wrong with, with putting that condition in there, because if there's not a fence or anything on the old site, we would not want somebody just going in and storing materials out there.
And we don't have an issue with the CUPs for one address with one landowner, and the other, the existing fence is another address with another landowner, correct?
No, the, understanding what Commissioner Julick said, we'll phrase it so the applicant is responsible for removing that material, and if there are issues, then we would, we would pursue it with the, the other property owner.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Sure. Good. Everybody comfortable in with the addition of that condition? Commissioner Teary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one, one more question, Chris. Is this considered to be a permanent site structure, or future can be moved from one location to another?
Staff expects this would be the location while the outdoor storage is, is onsite. If the applicant chose to relocate it for some reason, they would have to approach staff, and then from there, determine if it would need to see the Planning Commissioner Council.
Okay.
All right. With that, I will look for a motion at this time. Commissioner Julick?
I move that the Planning Commission recommend a city council approval of the conditional use permit for outdoor storage of landscaping and construction material area in the northeast corner of their site located at 11401 Rupp Drive with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall install a black vinyl coated chain link fence with a black metal screen on the north side. Two, material piled or stacked shall not exceed 10 feet in height. And three, the material from the existing CU site shall be removed by the applicant and may be utilized in construction of the new site at the applicant's discretion.
Thank you, Commissioner Julick. I'd look for a second. Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that would pass 5-0. This would go to the council on September 17th, I believe.
That is correct.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Slenia. The next item is a discussion of the definition and uses for medical service and office in Chapters 4, 20, 21, 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 24, 25, 26, 26A, 26B of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Slenia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I'd like to note, this is not a public hearing this evening, staff's again looking for some direction, and we'll have hopefully a good discussion on this topic this evening. From there, staff will look for direction, and will decide if a public hearing is in order in the, the upcoming weeks. As you recall, we discussed this back in July, it is on the Planning Commission's work plan, and it, it actually started with the discussion of uses within the I-3 district. Following some questions from the Planning Commission, more discussion with staff, it's really evolved into more of a discussion of the definitions of certain uses, and as well as where those uses are permitted. So that's what we'll be covering this evening, through, just a brief history, through different interpretations of the word "office." Both medical office and professional office, medical services have been permitted in the I-3 district, that's Office and Industrial Park. These are typically doctors' offices, clinics, that are, that can be utilized also in the retail zoning districts. If you look at some of the surrounding communities and look through that survey staff prepared of other communities, typically, you're seeing medical service in retail districts rather than industrial districts. Because we're dealing with existing conditions, and somewhere between six and 10 different medical uses in that I-3 district, I would say Burnsville doesn't necessarily have that luxury to say, no medical in the I-3 district. So now, we're with a number of staff discussions, trying to clarify and rectify some of these issues while not creating many non-conformities within the existing businesses. As I indicated before, parking traffic patterns are oftentimes different with medical services. These uses are booked, patients or customers are often booked back-to-back throughout the day with high turnover, high demands for parking. That is different than other professional offices who may have limited customer appearance, may have other ways of serving customers by email and internet and so forth. And for reference, I did want to point out that some type of medical, whether it's medical service, clinic, office, combination thereof, are all outlined as permitted uses in the B-1, the B-2, the B-3, B-4, mixed use, and HOC. So, just to give you an idea what staff has been working with since we met last, if you look at the list of clinics slash office, you'll see how some of these different interpretations could have been made. Not only do we have clinics listed in one district, but we have clinics for human care listed in another district. We have office as in professional or commercial, in a different district, we have office building. So going through this, it was, it was quickly noticed how convoluted portions of the ordinance were. So rather than just focusing on the I-3 district, staff took the opportunity to try to clarify these, eliminate redundancy, and make it clear for staff, Planning Commission, property owners, as they're looking through the ordinance. So, as proposed, this would be a brand-new definition to the ordinance. Medical service or clinic, a facility for the practice of medicine, mental health, chiropractic services, or dentistry for humans, including ancillary diagnostic laboratories and medical, medical counseling services, but not including inpatient or overnight care or operating rooms for major surgery. So we tried to craft a definition of a doctor's office or clinic to the best of our ability, also taking some other ordinances into account from surrounding communities. That is our definition at this time. Then to help clear that up, we're proposing eliminating professional or commercial from the existing office definition. I think you could certainly argue that medical offices are professional offices, so let's, let's eliminate that connection and just spell out what office is. Further, we're, whoops, we'd like to eliminate the definition of office warehouse altogether. We have office defined, we have warehouse defined, we have very little vacant property at this time, where we're not seeing large-scale developments of office buildings, where we're trying to calculate how much office versus warehouses in that building, which is really where that 25% came from. If somebody wants to build an office warehouse building, we'll make sure there's sufficient parking to, to satisfy their needs. So those are the definition, or changes to the definition section, staff has, has been Let me get back to just, just a second back to our July meeting. The Commission was also curious as to what ramifications any changes would have to existing businesses, non-conformities, can those businesses expand? Can they expand if they're deemed non-conforming, and so forth? So, in your packet, this is, this is page 13 of your, of your packet, it, it does state that any non-conformity may be continued through repair, replacement, restoration, maintenance, or improvement. So if fire or another situation strikes a business, they do have the ability to repair and get back to operation. do have the ability to repair and get back to operation. Some exclusions would be if the non-conformity discontinued for at least one year, similar to a conditional use permit. If the use discontinues for six months, then it becomes null and void. If we have a non-conformity and that use discontinues for a year, it is then null and void. And it does have some clauses related to fire and improvements and so forth. The other item the planning commission discussed was what about expansions? If we do deem a certain business to be non-conforming, what happens there? The business can continue and it can expand so long as it doesn't expand by more than 50%. And that is also current language that's in the zoning ordinance. No changes to that language as proposed by staff at this time.
Chair, can I?
Sure. Commissioner Singh?
Chris, the expansion can be 50%. I mean, I discussed it at that meeting and I'm still not clear. Now, if an existing non-conforming business wants to expand and the current non-conforming business, let's say 500 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
They can only expand by 250 square feet max.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
My question was what impact that will have on that vacant space? Because here is a neighboring business, wants to expand, is only being allowed to expand 50%. Now you take 50% of your size of that vacant space. Now you might leave a small area of that vacant space that nobody wants.
That is true, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. That's a good point. And really that, at that point, it's a discussion point between the business and the property owner or the leasing agent, or if they own the building, it's a decision they themselves need to make. I would say that's not, that's not out of the ordinary, that situation's not out of the ordinary to arise between a property owner and landlord.
As I said, it will not be in the interest of the property owner because they might be left with space that nobody wants because it's too small.
Mm-hmm. Unless he, unless the tenant on the other side is
Yeah.
is also interested in growing or what have you.
Unless it's the end unit and you have trouble.
Mr. Slaney, just so I'm clear, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, it kind of dovetails into what Commissioner Singh was talking about, is they can basically grow by 50% just by doing it.
Correct. They are entitled to.
Entitled.
Correct.
But if they wanted more, they would then have the option to come before us and the council and make the case for it and get approval then, correct?
Correct.
So there is an out, if you will.
There is an out, and I apologize, I was looking from strictly an entitlement.
Sure.
You know, walk in the door and saying, "I'd like to do this." That's what they're allowed.
So if they, for instance, if the 500 square feet and they could automatically get 250 more, but if they want 400 and take the whole thing, area, whatever, then they could come before us and the city council and
That's correct.
make their case and then theoretically do that.
Correct.
That answers my question. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for bringing that out. So I think I now understand it correctly. Thank you.
Kind of along that lines, if I would, I think the general idea here just maybe clarifies the whole concept is that there are, there are some parameters of, just on their own, that they can just go ahead without any approval from the city. But there's always the out for basically anything to come before the city and obtain approval.
Absolutely.
So if it was a great business or something that was wanted, that the city was anxious to start with or get into the city, they have means of obtaining that.
Absolutely. And that really, that really helps get to my next point, which would be the options or the opportunities for the planning commission to look at what the next steps would be. So, again, we have, we have existing medical uses in that I-3 district. We have an ordinance that depending on who's reading it, should or should not permit those medical offices in the I-3. So, one alternative, or the first for the planning commission, whoops, the top bullet would be to make no changes. That's not recommended by staff. That really leaves us in the same position we're in right now. The second item would be to take the strict line approach to say that we have medical services, services covered in the other retail districts. We don't want it in I-3. That would be similar to some of those market cities, but many of those market cities don't have the existing conditions. Burnsville does. Again, this is not something staff is recommending. You could, excuse me, you could recommend to the council, we allow medical service as a permitted use in the I-3 district. Take that new definition that staff's proposing and add it under permitted use in the I-3. We would have no non-conforming or non-compliant issues. Any businesses there could grow and expand, and any new businesses could also move in. And the last, of course, the most lengthy option would be, planning commission recommend to allow the medical service as a conditional use permit. Again, that would, that would create or label, define the existing businesses as legal but still non-conforming. So without coming in front of the planning commissioner council for special approval, they could remain, be repaired, be maintained. They could also enlarge by 50%. With approval by the planning commission or council, they could certainly grow by, by more than 50%. That also allows staff and the planning commission, the council, to review these medical users as they come into the district. If they're not already in and they're seeking a location within the I-3, it would be a conditional use permit, similar to the application right before this for outdoor storage. It's listed in the I-3 district and it's a specific process those businesses would, would follow. The city does have a certain initiative development, economic development focus on STEM. This would help encourage that or certainly not discourage that as we move forward. And lastly, the planning commission may recall, we went through this a few years ago in the I-3 district for sports performance land uses. That was a hot button or a hot land use five years ago, similar situation where they were, they were looking for high ceilings, large tenant spaces to operate out of. They were immediately focused or interested in the I-3 district rather than just saying, "No, we don't want to entertain this land use." Planning commission and council did allow it through a conditional use. Since then, we've had indoor skate park that's gone in there. We've helped go-kart, I can't think of the name of the business, but a go-kart place relocate. We've got a number of gymnastics schools and other athletic facilities in the I-3 that have gone through the conditional use permit process. With that, Commissioners, there is attached language in your packet that outlines chapter by chapter which uses were, we would delete or revise, the definitions we would look to add, and any changes. Again, this is not a public hearing. Staff's just looking for some direction. If we're on the right track, we could notice for a public hearing in return. If we're not, we can certainly have that discussion and do more research.
Thank you, Ms. Slaney. I think Mr. Taheri, would you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions, Chris. One is to follow up my concern about the expansion, going back to that section here. If there's an existing building that was built in '75 and it's 1,000 square feet, and the applicant come in with 500 square foot addition. Now, in past, when you exceed certain square footage percentage of the original building, you had to comply and confirm with the latest and current building code when you do your planning review, not only the expansion but also the existing building had to be upgraded, updated to that. Now, it depends on a certain square footage of expansion. Are we looking into this role at all? The applicant can, is restricted to both building to be complied to the current code?
That's a good question. Commissioners, that would, that's not something the planning commission is looking at now simply because it's not tied directly to the zoning ordinance. Whatever the building code would require that building owner or that tenant to do with the addition, that is what they would be subject to. And in a situation like that, there's really not anything, there's not anything the city is able to do for that tenant. As you know, it would depend what's sprinkled, what's not sprinkled, and what they're using the addition for and so forth. But that would be strictly per the building code.
The reason I'm asking, Chris, in some cases, when the, when the application is not very big or is not large enough, sometime the code throw it back into local
Oh, okay.
process to whatever the local building official allows. So that's why I'm kind of questioning that if you have thought about that aspect, if it actually up to local officials for approval on that, or have you had a chance to review that?
Commissioners, it's something I would rely solely on our building official to make that call.
Mr. Slaney, along those lines, correct me if I'm wrong, this, this I think is looking at essentially just expanding in existing space that's already constructed as a building, most likely, as opposed to adding on to a building, simply managing the properties that are in the area at the time.
That's most likely the scenario that would happen, but it's not limited to that. If, if there is, again, if it's an end tenant that wants to expand and the property owner's on board, it may be accompanied by a building addition too.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My second question is, Chris, on the definition of medical service or clinic.
Mm-hmm.
You're indicating operating rooms for major surgeries. Again, if it serves my memory, back in past, some projects that I worked on, anything above same-day surgery considered to be a major surgery. And same-day surgery allowed in small clinics, let's say small eardrum operations. It's basically half an hour, two hour, one hour pre-up and two hour, you know, post-op, and you're out the door. So is this what your definition of non-major surgeries, you can still do surgery, but how do you, how do you define that? Where do you draw a line on that?
That's very good, Commissioners. We are looking at same-day surgeries. So very similar to the Twin Cities Orthopedic expansion that we looked at months ago. Anything, really anything knee or elbow or hip or anything like that related where you're, you're coming in under your own power in the morning or sometime during the day and then leaving that same day, so you're not spending the night. Again, getting to construction requirements, once that patient is spending the night onsite, it changes dramatically how the space is built. So we are looking at things like LASIK eye procedure, dental procedures, things like that where they're typically, or not typically, where they're leaving the same day.
So we may have small operating room for basic, small surgeries?
Absolutely. And I, and I think it's fair to say those exist now in the I-3.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, I have just a couple, couple questions for you, Chris. Sorry. Just to clarify, the background gave us 74 buildings, 300 acres. Of these, 21 buildings or 28% are operated as multiple tenants. So really, it kind of narrows it down to those 21 buildings. I guess there is an outlier that someone could take an existing building and subdivide it, but we're kind of talking about 21 buildings, correct?
Correct.
And to clarify, we are, depending on the direction we go and what the city council would make a decision to do, I want to make sure I understand, talking about conforming and non-conforming. You had mentioned that as you put several options in front of us, some of them would, all of them would, would make a medical service clinic non-conforming.
Go ahead.
But in certain cases, they could expand via, you know, a conditional use permit. In some cases, they couldn't at all if the decision was made to not allow medical services. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
If I can find that page or that item, really, there's two ways to look at this. They would be, they would be illegal, non-conforming. Sorry, there'd be three ways to look at it. They'd be conforming, which would be this third item. If we said medical services are permitted, then they're all conforming, new or existing. The second would be illegal, non-conforming, which would be a use that is down there, they are, we decided to not permit any type of medical service either by CUP or other device. So they are down there. They're illegal, they're non-conforming. They would not be able to grow. Let me, let me check something. If they'd be able to... Okay, so even if they were illegal, non-conforming, so we did not, we did not permit them or allow them through conditional use permit, they could still expand. They could still continue down there. They could grow by up to that 50%. But in a situation where the use discontinued for a year, then the use would be gone.
Okay.
And the third would be the legal non-conforming, which would be through the conditional use permit. They could grow, they could come in and get the conditional use permit to grow by more than 50%. It just gives them more options.
And to clarify, if we do make a change, there would be a public hearing. All 74 building landowners, regardless of multi-tenant or not, would be notified and would have the opportunity to come in and talk to us in a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And then to help me wrap my head around a couple of things, I understand what we're talking about. In some cases, a medical office from a traffic and standpoint. But help me with, we've got a building down there now, I know, that's mostly vacant that at some point housed a bank. And the bank moved actually a few blocks down through a merger. So the majority of the building is empty. And so, help me with, because I see a banking operation as kind of the same. You've got people coming and going, you've got You've got people coming and going, you've got traffic. Help me get my head around why that is not an issue, say for instance, of the bank, because I'm assuming we allow banking in the I-3.
Bank, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that's a good question. The freestanding bank that was constructed and the relocation was actually done by city approval. I do not believe that banks per se are a permitted use in that I-3 district.
Okay.
Give me one second to, to double-check that. But that was a situation that the Commissions discussed before. There was a vacant parcel. The bank was looking to construct a significant-sized building with office space in there, and it was something the Council was interested in pursuing.
And I guess I could have done my homework and looked up approved uses in I-3.
That's our, this is a
I really didn't sit at home and come up with lists to stump you on.
Bank is not, is not a permitted use in the I-3.
Okay.
I think that bank is more considered like a retail thing that people walk in and walk out.
Well, and I, I do know from some of the discussions staff had, it was a certain percentage of bank, but a high majority of the building was office. And that's what made it appealing to the, to the Planning Commission and Council, was the, the jobs and the, the office orientation.
So that would have been allowed under a PUD?
Correct.
Is that correct?
And if I can, Commissioners, I did misspeak on the, the public hearing. We would have a public hearing. It would be notified through the newspaper, et cetera. At this point, because we are changing, we're changing almost every zoning district in the ordinance. We're changing B-1, 2, 3, B-4, HOC, we would not notify specific property owners. We would notify certainly anybody that was interested or had been following this. We would notify in the newspaper and et cetera, but we would not, because this would be a text amendment to the whole zoning ordinance, we would not notify specific property owners.
That gets me to my last question. Because when we started this, it was just about the I-3.
Correct.
And with all the other areas where we've kind of done some, some tweaking of the terminology, I, I went through it, and really, in no other areas are we, are we newly limiting some use. We've cleaned up some language to make it all work. But still, in the I-3, we are going to be limiting
It is, I would
That area, correct?
I guess it depends how you look at it. Yes, we are being more restrictive.
With or without the CUP, I get that.
Yes. We, we would be more restrictive. I think you could also look at it that in the past, the office maybe was not the correct category to put the medical office use anyway, and we're cleaning that up. Or maybe we're giving property owners more options as a conditional use permit than saying, "No, medical's not an office use."
Okay.
Which is kind of what got us started on this whole project, anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Chris, are you going to go through the actual language, or do you want some comments on the definitions?
I would, just due to the length of it, Commissioners, I would take, I would take comments, make changes, and assuming this would be back in front of you, we could look at it there.
Okay. I've got a, if I may, I've got a couple of comments. I got to get back to your definitions here.
That is page 16 of the packet. If you're looking at the PDF, it'll be 16 on my version.
Okay. All right, I think I have it here. In the medical service definition, or actually, no, go down to the, I'm a little bit concerned, on the medical services or clinic definition, I'm a little bit concerned that you might want to broaden that a little bit, where, you know, where you say the practice of medicine, mental health, chiropractic services, or dentistry for humans. You might want to include physical therapy or occupational, you might, I don't know if those are categorized as medical, as the practice of medicine or not. I look at those as kind of in a similar realm as chiro, chiro, being a chiropractor.
Certainly.
Don't know if they would fall under the medical or not. But maybe just make sure that you get a broad enough definition.
Certainly, yep.
And then on the, on your revision to the definition of the office, it was office, comma, professional, commercial. I think there, you might want to specifically exclude the medical services in that one, because again, medical services are considered professional services. So you might want to specifically exclude the medical service definition above, or exclude those items defined in the medical. And then on the goods sold item here, you're sort, I'm a little bit concerned about that and how it's defined. And then a little bit later, you talk about the accessory uses, and I'll fully admit, I'm a little bit confused with how I look at this definition and then how I look at the accessory use. Maybe you can speak to that, or maybe my, I'll just state my concern and then you can tell me how they play together. My concern is that we're probably, I mean, almost every business, especially smaller businesses, their sales force is right there. And they might be selling, they're selling, they might be selling business to business, and/or they might be taking orders and the orders get processed somehow, but they're not sold directly to the public at that location. So, so your definition of goods sold there and how that plays with the accessory use and everything, because I, I think most businesses are selling within that business somehow. Or I would say a lot of them are. So how, how do we address that?
Good question, Commissioners. We have the same discussion at, at least at a staff level when going through that. So let me, let me revisit that and see, maybe we can tweak that or add something to it to clarify.
Okay. That was my main two concerns, is just on those definitions. Make sure we, we broaden the one a little bit, and then the other one, address the goods sold somehow.
Thank you, Mr. Julik. Any other questions or discussion, thoughts, direction?
Mr. Chair, I think, I mean, I read this thing probably two times at home, and I think staff did a wonderful job in trying to clean up this. It's not perfect, because I mean, if I go through, there are questions I had, and I look at it and I made my notes, and I look at it again, and I said, "You know what? It was a good try, good effort." So I commend staff for doing that. There is time. I know you can go back to staff and they're going to look at it again, and if there's not something they need to clean, what they're looking for are the ideas, more ideas, not the wordsmithing, the language. I think they did a good job, and I commend them for it.
Thank you. I think they did a good job also. I think it captures the idea with the tweaking.
Certainly. And Commissioners, I'll, I will take verbiage if you have it written down at home or something like that and would like to email it to me, I'll certainly take it and look at that.
Just, okay, two more things. I can also be in support of the staff solution to allow them, especially via, you know, a conditional use permit, kind of as it's stated. If we're going to, if we're going to notify those homeowner, or those, those landowners in the I-3, I get, I completely understand what you're talking about. You can't notify the city about, but even, we are, we, as we, you talked to us last time, this is really kind of out of the norm for us as a city to go in and change with existing buildings. So I think we owe it to, even though we are, we can certainly allow them via a conditional use permit, I would like to see the staff solution. But as we go forward and with a public hearing, I'd like those landowners notified with this solution in front of it, and give them the opportunity to come and, and come and talk to us, because truly, they're the ones that were saying, "You could do this before," and now that's changed. We have, we have a solution in front of them, but it is different than what, what we're seeing, seeing today. So I don't know how the rest of the, everyone else feels about that. And then lastly, could you, mostly for the viewing people, could we talk real quick about, let's say that I am a bank, or I am a medical office, and I want to move into that vacant building that's mostly office space, to apply for the CUP from a standpoint of what it's, the process they're going to have to go through to get that? Is that possible?
Absolutely. Commissioners, and that's very important, the biggest timeframe is, or biggest issue is the timeframe. To satisfy state and city notice, legal notices and so forth, I need a minimum of 60 days from the time I would receive the application till the time the City Council would act on it. So that excludes time of build-out for your tenant space or actual construction, things like that. Certainly, we're willing to look at your interior design and work on some of those things on a parallel track as the conditional use permit, but the biggest time, the biggest issue is the timeframe. And as well as getting your property owner on board and, or your building owner, as well as some of the surrounding tenants, because a lot of them will, they'll either get notified directly, or the property owner needs to sign off on the conditional use permit before, before it's applied for. So those are some details that can help streamline that process a little bit.
Good to know. Go ahead, thank you. Commissioner, Thomas?
I guess I'd just like to chime in. I agree with the staff's recommendation and their, their first attempt at the definitions, the comments regarding the request to investigate broadening some of the definitions and defining them, I agree with all that. I agree with the notification and notice burden, some, I'd like to add to that, though. I think it's important that we notify the building owners, but also the tenants, sometimes they're not the owners. We've only got six non-complying businesses.
Correct.
You know, if they're the business owners, hopefully they get notified, or the building owners, they'll get notified. But if they're not, they may not even be notified by the building owner. I mean, with the number of six, that'd be nice, out of the norm, probably not required, but I would encourage us to notify those business owners.
That's a good point. Certainly, I'm glad you brought this up, because it's something staff won't normally do based on the ordinance requirements, but when or if we reach a public hearing on this, we'll, we'll notify those medical businesses and the, the property owners.
Nice, nice comment. I agree. I think that would be appropriate, because we're essentially changing what they could do going forward at this time. I think that's it as far as, looks like, as far as comments and discussions on, on this.
Commissioners, unless there's an objection, staff will proceed with the, the option that's on the screen now, continue tweaking some of the language, and we'll move forward with the public hearing. I expect it will be a few weeks out, just based on our, our upcoming meetings and some of the other projects we have going, but we'll get this back.
Commissioner Singh?
Mr. Chair, I think this is a very important, we are missing a very important part of the discussion. Staff has submitted to us several options, and we have not talked about which one we are supporting at this time. I know things can change, but I personally, I support the one on the screen, you know, that staff, I think, is the one, the one that staff is supporting, not the one I'm supporting. Just want to make that clear.
Good. And I guess
And that was my interpretation, the one that staff had supported of the options that were in front of us.
I think from a comment, my comment, I agree with Commissioner Singh. I think that's, that would be one I would support and
Yeah, we need to make it known.
Yep.
Public needs to know which one we are supporting.
Yep. Commissioner Julik, you had a question or comment first, though?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yes, I agree. I think that's the, the one I would support too, and that you move forward. One comment on the expansion, expand up to 50% without a land use approval. I know this isn't the final language or anything, but if we, when you get to the language, the expansion language, I think, just to make sure, maybe, you know, check with legal or whatever, that subject to the other zoning and et cetera requirements
Yep.
In, in this zoning chapter, something like that. Just, just to cover that, it's not carte blanche.
Correct. Gotcha.
So just to, just to summarize, and if there's any other questions or comments, obviously, we can, we can still take those, but the, the language on the screen right now would be the ones that, the general concept that we're looking at with some minor tweaks, as well as the definition of medical service or clinic, revising the definition of office and deleting the definition of warehouse. That would be the general concepts, my understanding, with some tweaking of the language, as we've discussed, particularly Commissioner Julik's suggestions about the broadening.
And as well, and certainly for the public hearing, we can go through this specifically, but the changes and deletions to all the subsequent chapters in the commercial and industrial.
Sure. Okay. That would, it would be basically, this would flow through the, the whole zoning ordinance.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Anybody, anybody happy with that thought process?
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your comments.
All right. The next item on the agenda is any updates. Commissioners, any updates?
Chair, I just want to commend the city and the various working committees for a wonderful fire muster week. I think a lot of, as I went around, I saw a lot of people attending, participating. It was a showcase for our great city of Burnsville, and I commend city leaders and all the volunteers that were involved. There were many, many volunteers, and I commend them and thank them for showing off our city, put it that way, and, you know, for letting people know what a great city we, we live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Any other updates from staff or Commissioners?
None from staff.
All right. Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is adjournment. I would entertain a
Go move.
Moved by Commissioner Singh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, 5:00.